Well, I think that we've made a lot of progress on areas that were very important to me going into serving, which were first trying to have a sound foundation fiscally for our future. I actually, in '07, late '07, when I ran before the financial crisis, thought that we really were sitting on a ticking time bomb. And then, when the crisis hit, the fuse started burning a lot faster, but it didn't create the problem. We were sitting on a big problem that was going to face us. And then, on top of that, I had believed for some time that we had had a slowly degrading quality of our city government and bureaucracy. Not fallen off a cliff, we were still better than many cities, but not what we had been 15-plus years ago. And I had believed we needed new leadership there, and then that new leadership would, it would take an extensive period of time to really transform our bureaucracy, which is not something you can do overnight. It's not like a business, and even in business, you can't do it overnight. And then, I was very interested in us continuing to be leaders in a number of areas. Not only the quality of our community, but our environmental initiatives, and trying to develop ways that we could, we could achieve what is today and captured with the vision of sustainability, where we have a way that we live today, and it doesn't jeopardize future generations, and we have a strong economy, and we have strong social responsibility at the same time. So that's, that was a multi-part vision that I had. I think we've come a long ways in achieving that, even while having to tackle for the last four years with what was an economic crisis. So that was an additional layer beyond what was expected.
How big a part of the change that you're describing was the hiring of Jim King?
A big part. I had said at the time that I thought the most important single decision we'd make on the council was hiring the city manager. And I think that we were both fortunate and prudent in making a very good decision there. And then, we've been, since then, gradually, Jim has been bringing in additional top leadership, and we as a council brought in a new city attorney, and now a new city auditor. And I think they have all contributed to a very strong leadership team.
Are there any council actions that you think back on and say to yourself, you had a major impact on the way your council came out on that particular issue?
Well, yes. First, in the, in the key hiring issues, I think I had a strong role in that. But beyond that--
Those would have been primarily in executive session, then?
Yes. And beyond that, I think in my term as mayor, for instance, I had made a commitment toward moving the Stanford hospital projects to completion. And we essentially accomplished that, and turned it around from what had been a very contentious process into one that I think both parties felt positive about. There's no one outcome and design that all parties are going to feel is perfect. But I think it has moved around the, the relationship with Stanford as well. And I thought we were fighting old battles principally, that Stanford, in the way that they have embraced sustainable practices, and had moved from their first proposals on the hospitals to their subsequent, which really mitigated their impacts to a great degree, narrowed the differences on that major project, the biggest project in city history, and in other aspects of the relationship. And people in the city and people at Stanford were still treating it like it was the 1990s. And I think we've moved in a positive direction on that. But also, we began the process of, in fact, in that year, of the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Task Force, of beginning to actually doubling the pace at which we were repaving our streets, which didn't get a great deal of publicity, and a series of measures along those lines, as well as looking at how we could leverage our resources. Now, we're now seeing major projects that are in that theme, and there are trade-offs with, with those kinds of opportunities. They, they have downsides to them, and we're going to struggle with that.
And we'll get to those in a second. But first, I'd like to ask you about city finances and the pension health care benefit situation. In your survey to us, you indicated that you'd like to see the city move in a direction of more of a cafeteria style of benefits, and giving employees more choices, and also ultimately, a defined contribution approach, or at least--
A hybrid.
A hybrid approach. Can you explain how you, what your vision is for that, and what the obstacles would be to implement something like that?
Yeah. Well, we, we had a colleague's memo that I co-authored two months ago, and that's really where we laid out the different alternatives that we wanted to examine comprehensively. Part of the issue was we had to await what would happen in the legislature, because many of the reforms that we and members of our community would like to see, actually, we were constrained from doing by state law. Some of those, we can now go forward with, others, we cannot yet. But this is an evolving arena, and so just because something is not permissible yet doesn't mean it will not be. So we'll be having in the next month, a response from staff on their first cut of what we can do now, what would involve additional legislative changes. But that's also built on a foundation of what we've already accomplished, which is a great deal. We've actually been leaders among cities in being proactive at accomplishing this, and this began shortly after I took office.
So under the legislative changes that have been adopted, that Governor Brown has signed, what further steps are possible now under current law?
Well, for instance, we can further increase the retirement age at which you'd be fully vested. That's a significant one. There are several other--
For the new employees, or for all employees?
For new employees, yeah. The other thing is that they actually align with what we have just finished accomplishing. We began to work on it a couple of years ago, but we have a series of employee groups, and as each of those contracts comes up, we negotiate it. But now, all, all employee groups pay their full share of the employee contribution to the retirement, the PERS fund. And that's a big deal. And the other thing that we can do still is further increase the employee responsibility toward their medical share. And as the laws exist, there are very few things that can be done that might affect retiree employees and the massive obligations that are there. But sharing a medical applies to both existing employees and retired employees. So that's an important area. We, it was very difficult to get them to even take 10% of the cost of their lifetime medical for them and their family. Palo Alto actually had a more generous program than other cities in that regard, and we can still move in that direction. But that's where this cafeteria plan type of thing ends up being a better solution for employees and the city, because then it allows greater latitude for the employees, and not just being stuck with an increasing percentage of a bad program. It, it may allow better programs.
And how do you feel that cities should deal with the unfunded retirement pension liabilities? And that these are just hanging out there?
Well, this is where we are constrained at the state level. As members of PERS, we are obligated to, to pay in based upon their anticipated rate of return. We and other cities have been skeptical about the rate of return. Their own actuary has been skeptical about their own rate of return. And I think that we're in a, a period of adjustment. They finally adjusted downward by just a quarter percent, which added, I think, close to $2 million to our annual cost in the city, by that small increment. We expect that there will be at least another quarter percent downward shortly, because their actuary had already recommended that, and that that starts adjusting this liability downward. The interesting thing is that because our contributions every year to PERS are based on not just the retirees we have, but the actuarial obligation, we start benefiting sooner for new employees than one might presume. So we just, three years ago, enacted our new employee lower rate, less than three years ago, that actually went on the books. And that starts helping us sooner. We don't have to wait until those employees retire before we start getting that reduced cost.
Moving on to another topic. I was interested in your take on infrastructure and the massive, the amount of money that's going to take to do all the keep-up catch-up, and also on replacements. What are your views on the top priorities for the city in terms of fixing the infrastructure? And what do you think about the funding possibility?
Well, the, the first priority was the keep-up. And actually, the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Task Force recommended that we go to the voters for additional revenue for the $2 million a year for keep-up. The council actually deviated from their recommendation. We took that out of our budget on an ongoing basis, and we've already addressed that from existing revenue. And then, the other two areas, I've felt all along that going to the voters for one massive bond is not something that would resonate well with the voters. And, and we will have to figure out what portions of, of these big projects the voters would be receptive to, and what type of revenue form. There are some that are simple majority, and others that are, are super majorities. And, and then on that same vein is, what I believe is that we have to come up with ways to try to reduce what goes to those voters. Now, that's part of why we're looking at this public safety building being funded through other means. And can we peel that off? We have other things that we may be able to peel off at the Coverly site, for instance. Are we going to be able to do some of that? We had our Bicycle Master Plan that didn't have a funding source, but we're now finding that we can come up with funding sources through various grants and innovations. We didn't have the golf course renovation on that plan, but in fact, we, we now have a plan to be able to pay for that, not coming out of general fund and actually generating profit off the course. So I think that when we have innovative collaborations, we can get some special things done that we otherwise wouldn't be able to, and there's just not money in the general fund. And if we can reduce and focus on what we might be asking the voters for, then we'll have a better chance of prevailing.
In the past, the level of awareness and receptivity for citizens to be funding some of these infrastructure projects, of course, the public safety building, has not been high. So do you think that that's changed at all in the past couple of years?
Why, it's, it's funny, we have a different, the definition of high is determined by two-thirds. If, if you define it, it was only, didn't go to the voters, because under what we now have as the two-thirds majority requirement for a bond measure, it didn't meet that threshold. It actually, in the polling, I think it was 58% were willing to pay for a new tax to pay for it, not just supportive of it. So there's presumably a higher number who were supportive of the new police building, but 58%, I think it was, were willing to have a new tax for it. But that's not enough to pass a bond measure. So it's still a problem if we are going to go with a measure that requires two-thirds majority. And that's part of why we, as a council, are interested in looking at whether there's a different way to fund it. I also think that we, we potentially could, through an education campaign, be able to convince the public of the need. When we've shown them and segments of the, the community the reality of what we face, and that we have both the police building and, building and fire buildings that could very well come down in a quake, the public gets it better then.
Why is it that the council is, and staff is contemplating going to the voters for their input on the 27 University Avenue proposal, and yet, that hasn't surfaced at all as an idea with respect to the public safety building and the John Paul proposal?
Well, the threshold at which we'd go to the voters is something that is not a sharp line. And, and I think the, the, the project at 27 University is, outside of the Stanford Hospital project, it's, it's the largest project in memory. We also, with the J. Paul project at the Adulent site, we don't know what might yet emerge as that project. I, for instance, pushed hard that it shouldn't be above our 50-foot height limit, and that the office square footage be scaled back. I think that if those two things were done, then we would probably have a greater community consensus around it, and, and it wouldn't essentially, in the council's mind, be so contentious that we, we feel like it needs to be a community decision. It's also not, you know, a fundamental rezoning of that area. It's an increase in the density, although that particular site is actually zoned at a lower density than everything surrounding it. Whereas 27 University is, is a major change in the entire, that gateway to our community.
So would these, with the development proposals coming before the city, as they do now, almost exclusively as PC projects? We have now seen a whole series of these, all of which have succeeded. I can't think of a PC project that ultimately was, was turned down and not, and didn't lead to development. As we sit here today, in the, in the environment of the Ariaga proposal and the John Paul proposal, what are your current thoughts about PC zone and the manner in which the city evaluates these kinds of proposals?
Well, actually, we had a big wave of PCs in the late '80s and the '90s.
Well, it tends to go with the economy, doesn't it?
Somewhat. But, but we, we had a decade where we had very few PCs. And in my mind, the ones that went through in the '80s and the '90s had very nominal public benefits. I think this has been a big change. The, the projects that we're looking at now are having, expected to have very significant public benefits, so they don't go forward. And that may be part of why we're seeing approval for them, is because we've been getting some big public benefits. But we, you know, the two biggest ones have not had approval. They've had an indication of support of going forward in the process. We still have got probably a year on both of those before a final decision would be made. I think that, that these are big decisions. We, as a community, if we look at, say, the J. Paul site, we've had 15, 20 years of recognizing that we have a true community need for a new police building. And I was one of the people who was critical of the former size and scale of the plan. I thought it was needed, but the, the plan was more than was needed. I pushed back on it before I was on council. I pushed back on it after I got on council. The plan we have now is moderately reduced from that, and I think about appropriately sized. But that's a community need. We have today in California, a tax system where it's very difficult to have a bond measure for these kinds of things. And many cities are falling behind, and ourselves included, on our ability to do that. So the question becomes, is it, is it a good idea or not a good idea to have these kinds of collaborations that leverage resources? And, and I think that it'll be very important to have broad community discussion on it. On the 27 University side, we think it's significant enough that we want an advisory vote, which I have said would be binding on my decision. I think they're big decisions, and important ones. If we can strike the right deal, I think the community ends up benefiting significantly from it.
Is it, is it time to create more structure to what a public benefit is? And what value, how the value trade-off works between the added value you provide a developer and development, additional development rights versus the dollar value of the benefit?
It may be. I've looked at this issue for a long time, not found any perfect solution. If you go in the direction that you were just suggesting, it becomes closer to this zoning for sale. And, and maybe that's not such a terrible thing. I mean, we've, it's, in, that we, in the end, look at not only the quality of the benefit, because, you know, it's like, if you take the Stanford Hospital, that was not a PC. But it had all the similar markings. It was a new zoning district, and we had a very significant negotiation with a whole bunch of public benefits and mitigations that they paid for. In the end, part of the, the push that I made was, I'm not looking for extracting a specific dollar amount from Stanford. I'm looking for mitigations of impacts and public benefits that offset impacts. And if they can be creative in how they can spend their dollars, then power to them. It's not extracting dollar amounts, and that's, that's kind of the downside of that. I, I still want to look at the quality of the benefit and the net value to the community of the benefit, rather than just the dollars spent.
But how do you do that with something like the Ariaga proposal, which features a theater that nobody's put on any list of infrastructure priorities for the city of Palo Alto? So in other words, if, if a developer like John Ariaga came to the city and said, "What can I do for you that would meet the city's highest priorities in exchange for you guys giving me the ability to build something larger than the zoning allows?" You wouldn't come up with a theater for theater works.
No, but, but donors often don't come and offer-- Well, if it's, in this case, it's a donor, it's a philanthropist.
And that makes a difference to you?
I think it's, it's a difference in what is offered. So in the case of a project, if you have a philanthropist, say you take a Lucy Stern. And if we said to Lucy Stern, "We don't want a community center, we want you to build a new police building." Do you think we'd have the Lucy Stern Police Building? I doubt it. That's not how it works.
Well, but Lucy, Lucy Stern was not asking to build four high-rises.
No, but in, and, and so in this case, it's important to recognize if, if that, there would be a different flavor to it if the developer was looking for those high-rises for profit. But in this case, the, John Ariaga is proposing to donate those, so there's two halves to his philanthropy here. One, the city gets, and the other, the Stanford gets. And, and that's the reality of when you have a philanthropist doing something, they're going to say, "What appeals to them?" And so this goes to the question, though, of why we can't stipulate that the philanthropy is toward the thing that's high on our infrastructure list. That was your question. And that's my answer to that question. Now, on top of that, though, we actually have moved that. When that project was proposed initially, the city came back and said, "Well, we have a great need in our entire intermodal transit center, which was built 70 years ago, and doesn't function today well enough, and certainly doesn't function for our future needs." And, and that's what our staff was able to convince Mr. Ariaga to pay for, which is a higher cost significantly than the cost of the theater. This is probably over $100 million in public benefit toward our intermodal center. So, so we have that as actually the biggest dollar public benefit, not the most visible and, and maybe memorable in a sense of a great public building.
Well, I want to go back to your, to the distinction you're making between a donor, a philanthropist, and a developer. If Stanford, which owns the property that we're talking about, had come to the city of Palo Alto and said, "We want to build four high-rise buildings," and basically negotiated the same deal, are you saying that you would approach it differently because it was Stanford as opposed to a resident making a donation to Stanford?
The, the project being a philanthropic project, yes. I think influences what demands we can make on the project initiator. Yes, I do think so.
Why?
For one thing, because we would not have the opportunity for the benefits if we stipulated.
But you don't know that. I mean, you haven't put out, you haven't put out a proposal that invites, a request for a proposal that invites developers to provide these benefits, and to offer what development rights would be necessary in order for those to be provided.
We haven't gone that route, but I would consider it very unlikely that we would get this kind of, of contribution. When you add up the financial value to the city of what's being offered, it's enormous.
So if John Ariaga had gone to Stanford and said, "I'll give Stanford the money to develop those office buildings and to do this project," and Stanford became the applicant of the project, you would approach that differently in your mind than the way it's coming to you now?
Somewhat, yes. Not 180 degrees differently, but yeah. Yeah?
Okay.
Another LA juice topic is Coverly. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are as far as what you see for the vision of Coverly. And I know in the survey, you mentioned feeling positive about renewing the lease, at least for some period of time, until the working groups have made a proposal. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, well, the city's interest has been to continue to be able to hold on to Coverly for purposes similar to what we've been using it for, for over 20 years, on community services. So the only reasons that this has come up in the last few years were, one, because Foothill, Danza College District, had an interest in building a permanent campus on a portion of that land. And then, in response to that, the school district said, "No, we need all that." And we forced the district basically to enter into a planning process, because we said, "We really need you to collaborate with us on a long-term vision." What the district had initially indicated was that they would need all of our, the land, including the eight acres of city-owned land, and need most of it sooner rather than later. They've since revised that position. As they got down to the table and started studying it more, they realized that, you know, just saying, "We need everything that we have a right to, and everything you have a right to, and we need you to give it to us whenever we want it," we didn't feel as a city that that was a very reasonable and well-thought approach. We're now having a well-thought approach. And it looks like they will not need to take back a portion of Coverly in the time period that would be the next renewal of the lease. And so my response was based upon what we understand at this point in time about their needs. On top of that, we've had discussion, and I think that we, even with that renewal, there are two parts to a lease. The lease is, one, we lease the land, and the other is, we pay them a couple million dollars a year for them to not sell it and develop it. Well, 20-something years ago, that was a concern. Today, they're asking us to landbank their land, and we pay them to landbank their land. That doesn't make good sense to me. What I have said already, over the last year or more, is that we should begin a process where that covenant not to develop goes into a fund that is dedicated toward replacing the uses that we will lose the availability to provide when they need to take over the Coverly land, which I accept that other than our eight acres, they will eventually need to do so. I've also expressed that the eight acres, we need to retain, because that will be too little land to provide the services that we are currently providing, and, and we need at least that much.
So you would have a fund for supportive uses that are currently there, so just community nonprofits, the arts, the dance?
Yes, and playing fields, too. I mean, if it is taken over-- I mean, if it is taken over as a high school, we'll have a situation like at the two high schools where our field agreement doesn't apply at the high schools. And this is one of the reasons why the redesign of the golf course, I thought, was important. Because even though it's not the same end of town, it has a ripple impact of if we liberate 10 and a half acres for playing fields, then, then that can have an impact on mitigating the loss of playing field land there.